Good evening, everyone. I now call the special meeting of the City Council of the City of Lancaster to order for November 17th, 2022. A few reminders just at the top of the meeting. The purpose of this special meeting is to interview applicants to fill the vacancy on City Council. There are no public comment periods during this meeting. This meeting is being recorded and livestreamed, and for those of you here in the room, please take this opportunity to silence your devices. For applicants who will be speaking this evening, we ask that if you are able, please do so at the podium in the center of the room. There's a microphone that you can adjust to whatever height you need to. We will then, I'll ask everyone who is willing and able to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Be seated. Mr. Harris, if you could please call the roll of members.
Yes, Madam President. Mr. Royo.
Here.
Mr. Colleste. Miss. Miss Craig.
Here.
Ms. Diaz.
Here.
Ms. Walsh.
Here.
And President Beckett.
Here.
All right. Our one and only agenda item for this evening is the interview of applicants for the vacancy for the City Council position. A little bit of background for everyone this evening. We received 10 complete applications by the deadline of 5:00 PM on Friday, November 11th. I asked members of council to submit their questions to me. From those submissions, I chose six varied questions from each council member. The applicants received these questions in advance of tonight's meeting and will be interviewed in alphabetical order by last name. Interviews will each take approximately 15 minutes, with each applicant getting up to three minutes to introduce themselves to council and state why they are interested in serving. The rest of the time will be given for questions. I will be keeping time, and if I do need to give someone a signal to wrap up, it is to ensure that we respect everyone's time here this evening. And with that, we will begin our interviews with Ahmed Ahmed. Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for being here tonight. Just to start out, we're going to ask you to affirm that you meet some requirements to serve and hold office. Are you at least 18 years of age?
Yes.
Have you continuously resided within the City of Lancaster for at least one year prior to the date of the appointment?
Yes.
Are you currently a federal, state, or county office holder or employee of the City of Lancaster?
No.
Thank you very much. Mr. Ahmed, you have up to three minutes to introduce yourself to council.
Good evening, council. My name is Ahmed Ahmed, and I'm a volunteer community organizer, a proud Lancasterian, a certified hospitality executive, and I hope to serve the city alongside you on council. As a former refugee who was born in Latrine, the advancement of Lancaster and our commitment to welcoming has been my life's work. My desire to serve is based in continuing our shared goals around affordable housing, making sure that government is accessible through strong neighborhood engagement, and ensuring that each and every resident of this city has a thriving quality of life, no matter their address or no matter what part of the city they live in. I've worked with this council on resolutions such as Welcoming Week and was crucially involved in the audit process that won us our recertification as a welcoming city. I had come out to defend the Department of Neighborhood Engagement and make sure it became solidified in this city administration, and I'm also a proud graduate of the Neighborhood Leaders Academy, as well as a graduate of Leadership Lancaster. I currently serve the Human Relations Commission on the Advisory Council, and I'm also an equity partner with the Lancaster Equity Council, which I'm glad to be a part of. I'm an elected committee person for my precinct where I get to proudly serve my neighbors in Precinct 6-2 in Northeast Lancaster. Through my professional experiences, I became a certified hospitality executive through the American Hotel Lodging Association, which brings that missing perspective of tourism and hospitality management to council. Lancaster has a thriving lodging and service industry, which plays a pivotal role in our continued success in economic resilience, and I understand the importance that the lodging and our small businesses play and how we are all interconnected here in the city. I've overseen budgets of eight to 15 million in annual revenue and have experience working with department heads, you know, acquiring RFPs, and understanding how to balance budgets and handle expenditures while dealing with people with different backgrounds, perspectives, and goals. I have always been a unifier with a passion for building bridges to achieve results based in the overall good rather than my own personal agenda. I understand the difficulties this positions will bring, and I am not naive to challenges a new counselor will face, but I will work with city officials, work with U.S. counselors, as well as with our department directors to learn from them, learn how I could assist them, similar as I do in my professional capacity. This evening, you will have many fine candidates in front of you, but I am uniquely fit for this seat as a product of neighborhood engagement and accessible government, and I will be an example to many in my community and other underserved communities that they too could be leaders, that government is accessible, and their voice matters. As the first former refugee and first Muslim American on council, it will be an honor to serve a city that has done so much for me and my family. This city granted me and my family safety in the American dream, and my life's work is dedicated to repay that debt to Lancaster City. I hope you allow me to continue my life's work and bring my unique hospitality, professional, volunteer, and personal experiences to council so that I could serve each and every resident across the city.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ahmed. We'll begin your questions. What community organizations, city boards, commissions, or authorities, or other community activities are you currently involved with?
Okay, well, my community engagement started with door-to-door canvassing during the Jazz King campaign, and at the doors of neighbors across the city and across this county, I learned that the power of storytelling was important, and I needed to be a champion of welcoming in my community. Through that, I became a volunteer organizer with Church World Service, which I've been with for many years, and on Church World Service, not only am I a part of the immigrant and refugee leadership team, but we also were able to form the New Neighbor Speakers Bureau, where I'm happy to be a part of the inaugural class. So we, as a cohort of former refugees and immigrants, get to use our storytelling to build bridges in the community, speak out on advocacy, and helping others get re-acclimated to Lancaster. I'm a proud graduate of the Mayor's Neighborhood Leaders Academy, where I was able to start an idea of bringing here-to-stay welcome bags to new Americans so that they could get integrated in their communities here in Lancaster, but also show them that they are valued and that we really want to retain them here in Lancaster City, because we know the valued impact that our immigrant and refugee community has. I'm also a graduate of Leadership Lancaster, where I was able to connect with many business leaders across this county as well as the city and learn those different perspectives and how we could build bridges towards our shared goals. I am currently on the Advisory Council of the Human Relations Commission, where we get to promote education and anti-discrimination and who to call when you feel you have been discriminated here in this city. I'm also on the Lancaster Equity Council as an equity partner, where I was able to continue that idea of here-to-stay welcome bags and bringing that retention of Lancaster refugees here in the community. And then, I'm also a proudly elected Democratic Committee person who was first appointed but felt it was important to seek that election and give my community members that opportunity of democracy to elect me and proudly serve them currently as the committee person for Precinct 6-2 in Northeast Lancaster.
Thank you very much. Vice President Craig.
Thank you, President, Council. Ahmad, if appointed to City Council, do you plan to seek election for one of the open seats in 2023? Why and/or why not?
Yes, my intention is to serve in a long-term capacity if afforded, the honor of serving alongside you guys in council. I understand that strategic planning and some of the long-term goals that we want to do around affordable housing, accessible government, is going to take time and it's going to take working with you guys, and it will also allow me to, once again, be appointed into a position but then give it back to the residents to decide. Grade me, am I fit for this position? And, you know, it's also important to me that we, like I said, have long-term goals here in City Council, and this isn't for a personal agenda or a checkmark on my resume. This is a real-life dedication to serve. So yes, I look forward to, if elected, being, if appointed, to run for election and, you know, really get to serve my community.
Thank you.
Counselor Colleste.
If I'm appointed to City. Sorry. If I'm appointed to City Council, what committee would most interest you to serve on, and why?
I would say the Finance Committee. You know, I have experience with budget building, budget analysis, capital expenditures, but also helping other department heads look at their budgets. How could we get it in balance? How could we find realistic solutions to what we're able to attain in this fiscal year? You know, department heads know their budgets better than anybody, and if I come into this position, I would rely on the city directors to help me understand their budget, how could I help them? But also, the Personnel Committee, just because I have such a passion for public service and, you know, getting other leaders, especially leaders from parts of the city that may be underrepresented or communities that may be underrepresented, showing them that, just like myself, you could be involved in your city. It's important that we're at the table and help them get access to government.
Counselor Diaz.
As a member of council, how would you encourage public participation among the city residents?
Well, first, I would personally invite leaders and city residents, especially, like I said, from places that are underrepresented here in the city or maybe of a different socioeconomic class than others in the city. I would invite them here to council, and I would also be an example, you know, as a Muslim American, as a former refugee, that these underrepresented communities can have a seat at the table. But what's very important is we need to stop thinking that, you know, it is the community's job to come to government. It is the government's job to come to the community, and that is how I plan to serve. Because, you know, for so long, you know, we have asked the question, well, why don't residents come to council meetings? Is it the time? Is it the, you know, it's not that. What are we doing to go out there, invite them, speak to them in their neighborhoods, and invite them to council? I would also continue our efforts towards language access and community engagement to make sure we have interpreters here in council, invite these families. You know, it was great when we had the Welcoming Week, seeing the Swahili families and the families from El Salvador, but why aren't they here at every council? And why don't we make it intention to invite them, have language access, and then afterwards, I would stick around, make sure I speak to residents. What are your questions? How could we best to serve you? And what's going on in your neighborhoods that we could help you with?
Counselor Royo.
Thank you, Council, thank you, Council President. Mr. Ahmed, what experience do you have successfully working with people of varied backgrounds and perspectives?
You know, as a volunteer refugee community organizer, you know, a lot of times, you're working with people from all over the world, you know, and you're welcoming them here to Lancaster, and you're trying to help them integrate and assimilate into their new communities. So sometimes it takes understanding those varied differences and respecting their differences. Also, you know, in my professional capacity, I work with leaders in different segments of business every single day. We may not have the shared goals, we may not have, you know, the same perspective, but we're able to build consensus. I've always tried to be a consensus builder, a unifier, and once again, I understand, even on council, it's not going to be what I want, it's going to be what's the good of the overall community, what's for the good of council. So building consensus, understanding differences, is something that I am very intentional about. Also, being a graduate of Leadership Lancaster, in my cohort, you know, you have people from different walks of life, different political backgrounds, different thinking, but you have to respect people's differences and try to build that consensus, especially when you're doing things like strategic planning and, you know, especially as trying to be a champion of the whole city and represent the whole city. You know, I know I have some work to do in going into certain parts of the community and learning more from them, learning more from their stories, learning more from their struggles and the history of some of these neighborhoods and how I could better serve them. So not just on council, but also in the community, going out and learning from all of these different places, especially, once again, those who feel like they do not have a seat at the table.
Counselor Walsh.
Thank you, Council President. This is your last question. So what unique experiences or strengths do you possess that you hope can benefit City Council in serving the city?
Once again, like I said, you're going to have many fine candidates in front of you who are all qualified, but I feel that I'm uniquely fit for this possession because of my personal and my volunteer experience, being a former refugee. You know, I was born in a Latrine, I almost died of malaria. I feel that I am destined to serve this city, and it's a responsibility, it's a duty to pay back that debt that was given to me as a Lancasterian. And also, my professional experience, once again, we are missing that segment on council, you know, the tourism industry and, you know, how the city is going to bring bigger conventions and what that means. So, once again, I think not just my refugee and being the first Muslim American, but also being a man of all quadrants of the city is very important to me, being able to represent each and every part of the city. You know, I'm a committee member in the Northeast, but I really want to reach out to places in South Lancaster, you know, the Northwest. How could we all build bridges? You know, working in the hospitality community, you really learn that welcoming means welcoming everybody. So how could we work together to build, you know, a Lancaster that works for all of us? And once again, there's many fine candidates this evening, but, you know, my strong desire to serve and my unmatched passion is what makes me uniquely fit for this seat.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ahmed.
Thank you, Council.
You are welcome to stay, and all applicants are welcome to stay for the duration of the meeting or go as you wish. So thank you. We move on to our second interview, and that is Liza Ong-Ante. Good evening.
Hello.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
I'll begin with your requirement questions. Are you at least 18 years of age?
Yes.
Have you continuously resided within the City of Lancaster for at least one year prior to the date of the appointment?
Yes.
Are you currently a federal, state, or county office holder or employee of the City of Lancaster?
No.
Thank you very much. Resetting my time here. All right. If you could please take a moment to introduce yourself to council.
Hi, I'm Liza Ong-Ante. I'm a first-generation Asian-American. I moved to Lancaster here in 2010, and ever since, this has now been my home. I am married, and I have a six-year-old son who attends the Smith Widdell Elementary School. I have years' experience in customer service and working with people and being able to relate and hear what their concerns are. I worked with medical benefits and policies and helping people understand the financial part of any type of procedure or office visit that they may attend. I learned through my years of experience to identify people's concerns and help them and take the time to understand their benefits and options. A lot of times, people's concerns are financial, over their personal health or well-being, and that's something that I feel strongly needs to change to provide more safety towards Lancaster has been a great learning experience in my journey through this city, and I want to serve and do more.
Thank you very much. What community organizations, city boards, commissions, or authorities, or other community activities are you currently involved with?
I'm currently not involved with any specific organizations, but I do want to get more involved, and I think it is important and part of learning, especially after, hopefully, hearing from other people speak tonight, other things that I can grow towards.
Thank you very much. Vice President Craig.
Thank you, Council President. For the sake of not messing your name up, I'm going to say Liza. Liza. If you're, if appointed to City Council, do you plan on seeking election for one of the open seats in 2023?
I do plan on trying to seek election. I think it will be something that I can try to do to serve the city and towards development and growth. With my son being six, I think it's important that I need to continue as having another generation to embrace and set my roots down in the city.
Thank you.
Counselor Colleste.
If I'm appointed to, if I'm appointed to City Council, what committee would most interest you to serve on, and why?
If appointed to the committee, what would most interest me to serve would be for public safety. From what I've learned from my years' experience of working with people, safety provides security, and when people are secure, they can make a more objective decision towards other things, and they can look outside of their own, like, environment to extend more efforts towards the community and feel more of a collectivism versus being so focused on individualism.
Thank you.
Counselor Diaz.
As a member of City Council, how would you encourage the public participation among city residents?
I would encourage public participation through awareness. So many times through the years, I see people that change focus from their goals, and I think it's important that through some of the development where people feel stuck, I feel it's important that we try to bring them back and feel included and feel supported and let them understand that we are on your team. One of the things I've learned most recently, it's not necessarily what you say, it's how you say it to someone so that they can hear that you're there for them. You may say something that may be nice, but it may not be kind, and I think it's important that people understand that we are here for you and we're here to serve you, and we are interested in your, what's best for you, and so that you can live your best life.
Counselor Royo.
Sorry.
What experience do you have successfully working with people of varied backgrounds and perspectives?
The experience I have is working through the various medical specialty practices that I've worked with. I've worked with some people that, you know, a lot of times, it's difficult when people have to have these medical procedures, and sometimes it's, you see people that will come in and there's no translator, and they don't know other resources that they can have. So they'll bring in a family member who potentially has to take off work to be with this person and trying our best to let them know that we're here to help you through your process. It is frustrating. You're not feeling well, you have to learn how to understand your finances and try to figure out what your benefits are going to cover towards your care. And I feel good knowing that I can help people learn to understand that better and kind of ease the process for them through this challenging time.
And Counsel Walsh.
What unique experiences or strengths do you possess that you hope can benefit City Council in serving the city?
The strengths that I possess are that I'm determined and I have a strong work ethic. I, if given a task, I will exhaust all measures to try to make sure that I can get something resolved and make sure that something runs productively and efficiently. And if I don't know how to do something, I will continue to search and search and find a solution.
Thank you very much. Thank you for coming tonight, and again, you're welcome to stay or go as you wish. All right, that brings us to our next interviewee, and that is Ms. Tine Darby. Good evening.
Good evening.
Or if you want it.
Good evening, counselors.
All right, we'll begin with your requirement questions. Are you at least 18 years of age?
Yes.
Have you continuously resided within the City of Lancaster for at least one year prior to the date of the appointment?
Yes.
Are you currently a federal, state, or county office holder or employee of the City of Lancaster?
No, I'm not.
Thank you. Give me a moment to reset my time. All right. And Ms. Darby, you can begin with your introduction to council.
Good evening, council. I want to start out with basically giving my resume, since it was misquoted incorrectly. First and foremost, I am a lifelong resident of the southeast part of Lancaster, and I have been born and raised in Lancaster. My education is from the School District of Lancaster. I did graduate from J.P. McCaskey High School. I also attended Westchester University for a year. Unfortunately, I did not finish, but I did then attend Willow Street Votech, that's what it was called at the time that I went there, for medical assistant. So with that, then, I took into the medical field, and majority of my time was done as a medical claims examiner, and then I went into working in the drug and alcohol field where I was a nurse. And I, as a nurse, I worked with the medications and the doctors, and I administered injections and did, also did the billing for the drug and alcohol facility to the, oh my goodness, I can't even think of the name, but we did the billing, and I also did a lot of office work that most required of me working the front desk and things like that. So, to go into my family. My family has had its roots here in Lancaster City. My uncle worked for the City of Lancaster. My mother dedicated her life to domestic violence services, as well as my cousin, who also works here, who's in the SCI Union. And I have two children, they're both grown, and I have a grandson. And I have a husband, and my husband is the greatest thing ever because he is the reason why I stand here today. This was a hard decision for me, but my community reached out to me and asked me to come run for this position, and I love serving my community. And I feel that I would be the best for this position because of the service that I have already done within the community. I also feel that we, as residents, need to be able to come to council members and be able to express ourselves, and we should represent all of the residents, and not all of the residents feel represented. So my husband.
One second. Oh, sorry.
Okay.
Please finish your thought, but I just wanted to give you a quick heads-up.
No, I was going to say, me and my husband have opposing political views, so I'm here to represent all of Lancaster City residents.
Thank you so much. What community organizations, city boards, commissions, or authorities, or other community activities are you currently involved with?
Oh, okay. So, for 11 years, I served as a minority inspector for the election polls, working at the election polls, and in 2018, then, I became a city committee member, and in November of 2020, I became the first Black Latina to ever chair the Lancaster City Democrats. I'm also an L.A. graduate, which I feel like has groomed me for this time I am standing before you. I'm also on Habitat for Humanities Board, and I'm also a part of our Family Service Committee. I'm also a part of SACA Steering Committee for the Elm Street Grant, which is I'm also a part of SACA Steering Committee for the Elm Street Grant, which is for the Southeast Lancaster. I was also a part of Project Activate, which was for through the Lancaster Community Foundation. And I was a part of the Southeast Design Team. And from that, Project Activate came Southeast Times, which I am a co-founder and a writer. I am part of the Combined Sewer Overflow Control Plan as an advisor. The Civil Service Commission. I was recently elected to State Committee. And being on State Committee then affords me to be on LCDC's Executive Board. I'm also a part of the Black Caucus State Committee, the Latin Caucus State Committee. And I also do various speaking engagements and panels. I want to also mention my awards that I have received. In December of 2019, I was awarded Neighbor of the Month by the city of Lancaster. And in September of 2022, I was awarded District Leader of the Year from by LCDC, and that is the first time they ever gave that award.
Thank you. Vice President Craig.
Thank you, Council President. Tynae, if appointed to the city council for this, will you plan on seeking election for the seat that will be open in 2023?
Yes, I will. I feel that because I I want to serve my community that has asked me to come forth, I believe that a year is not enough for me to fully understand the totality of this position and and fully immerse myself into the position for my community. So therefore, I would be seeking election.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Kalix.
Thank you, Council President. If appointed to city council, what committee would most interest you to serve on and why?
So I actually have three that I I would like personnel, first of all. Being that I serve on the Civil Service Commission and the reason why I wanted to be on the Civil Service Commission was to ensure the diversity, inclusion, and equitability of the staff in here, the city of Lancaster. And I would like to also participate in public safety. Just recently, I was at a meeting with Ms. Byrd that is here about church street towers and the intersection there and the safety of that intersection, that four-way intersection. And also Public Works. I have a really good relationship with rapport with Director Campbell. And I've attended many meetings that he's been in, especially with issues around the southeast, especially parking is a huge issue for the city of Lancaster.
Thank you. Counsel Diaz.
As a member of city council, how would you encourage public participation along the city residents?
Well, first of all, I have a huge following on social media to begin with. A lot of people already view me in a city official capacity. Many people come to me for, you know, information and and so as well as just knocking on doors. So within my time as a committee person, I decided I wanted to do a walkthrough of my precinct. And Counselor O'Royall was one of those who came at the time. He was a candidate. I took Officer Morant with with us. The Neighborhood Engagement came along, CASA came along, and we just walked my precinct and engaged the people that were out and asked them, you know, their concerns or if they wanted to be aware of anything that was going on, you know, within the city or if they wanted to join the Love My Block grant. So, I mean, also, I I help with like job fairs. So with Southeast Times, then also came Southeast Works. So with that, you know, like I said, posting, Facebook, I meet people where they're at. So when we had the African American Festival and I was registering people to vote, I wasn't sitting at the table. I went to them and met them where they were at. And I also believe that I should lead by example, and that's one of the things that I try to do. So if I'm out in the community, coming to you, talking to you, I feel like that is how we're going to reel back in the residence. Thank you.
Counsel O'Royall.
Ms. Darby, what experience do you have successfully working with people of varied backgrounds and perspectives?
So as a drug and alcohol nurse, obviously, I worked with people in many different socioeconomic statuses, races, age. So one of the things that I will say is when that that job did close, which is a reason why I did then stop working. My last interaction with with the clients, I had to then contact them to find out where they wanted their last prescriptions to go to. And one gentleman who always challenged me in everything and always tried to get away with things, he did write me back and end up saying, even though we had our differences, at the end of the day, Tynae, you were fair. And so that's one of the things that, you know, I pride myself on is to be that fair person. I also feel like my experience as the Chair of the Lancaster City Democrats also has given me a different perspective on multitudes of people and personalities and perspectives because I had a fifty-plus seated committee plus then on top of dealing with candidates. So just dealing with those multitude of people and being able to still be a leader despite all the disagreements that there was and everything and keep everything together.
Counsel Walsh.
Thank you, Council President. Ms. Darby, what unique experiences or strengths do you possess that you hope can benefit city council in serving the city?
So my first one is impartiality. One of the things, like I said, is me and my husband have different political stances. But I've also been able to, as my time as Chair, work with Republicans to get things done in the city, to work together to show that we can cross political lines for the betterment of the residents of Lancaster City. I also, with Southeast Times, I am bipartisan. So in our last edition, I had to feature the Republican candidate that was running against Ishmael Smith Wadeau. So in that, I feel that I can represent all the residents impartially despite my affiliation with the Democratic Party. I also feel that my reserve, my level of professionalism, I do not internalize criticism. I feel that I listen with the intent to understand you rather than to reply to you. And I think that's very important because a lot of people listen with the intent to reply and therefore you're missing what the person has said. Last, I believe my integrity is the greatest of them all. I stand in the decisions that I make. And when I was the Chair, I had to make a lot of decisions. And a lot of them I made on my own. And making them on my own allowed me then to be able to stand in those choices that I made. And I made them for the betterment of the committee so that it can be better for the community. And I want to say one last thing. I'm sorry. I want to say that I stand here truly because. Sorry.
Technology. Fine. Continue, please.
I stand here because I said, I feel that this quote just embodies me. Change will not come if you wait for it for some other person or some other time. We are the ones that we've been waiting for and we are the change that we seek, Barack Obama.
Thank you very much, Ms. Sarachi. And you you hit just fifteen minutes, so very good timing. All right. Reset that. All right, our next applicant this evening will be Tony Dastra. Good evening, Mr. Dastra.
Good evening.
I'll begin with the requirement questions. Are you at least eighteen years of age?
Yes, I am.
Have you continuously resided within the city of Lancaster for at least one year prior to the date of the appointment?
Yes, I have.
Are you currently a federal, state, or county office holder or employee of the city of Lancaster?
No.
Thank you very much. All right, just gonna reset that. And please introduce yourself to council.
Hello, everybody. My name's Tony Dastra and all the rumors are true. No, jokes aside, so I have been in this chamber quite a lot over the last seven years of my life. Recently, not so much. In fact, Ms. Walsh is probably at least familiar with me at this point. However, in those seven years, I've gone from being a college dropout who left to live with his great-grandmother to a very frustrated resident who ended up being one of the youngest people to ever run for mayor. I ended up completing my degree during that campaign. After that, I worked in property development briefly. I hated it personally, but it gave me good perspective. I floated around for a little bit without a car and I understood the transportation struggles of those who live in the city without reliable transportation. After that, I was an Uber driver. I really needed a car, so I got a car loan, began Uber driving, used that to hold myself over until I got a job at Sheets. I worked there until the pandemic and then I was working at Bloombox. I was very much in the customer service area of that department. A customer actually gave me this ring and I will probably bring that up later. After that, I went back to floating around for a little bit, Uber driving, landscaping, worked at the Candy Factory briefly. And now finally, I'm proud to say what started as an internship in Lancaster Township has become a full-time job as the Public Works and Planning and Zoning Administrative Assistant. It is exactly the kind of opportunity I've been looking to do over the last seven years since coming back home. Also, I am the chairperson of the Gold Goose Party, which isn't technically an official political party. However, me and my younger brother began the organization because we understood that in order to capture energy year over year and ensure that we could make a difference in the way we, which our generation thinks very differently, we're the most unaffiliated generation currently. So we wanted to make sure we had a vehicle that we were going to begin to build to ensure that we could represent people in a different way. It's nothing against any of the major parties, especially on a local level, because I believe that when you come down to the micro levels of government, you're really talking people to people. However, we want to make a difference, not just in our community, but we want to create an example for other communities to follow. And so that's part of why I find it difficult to affiliate with any major party, even on a local level, is because I do think that we, as a people, need to consider different modes of engaging and representing in order to come to solutions, especially at this very politically divisive time for the entire country.
Thank you. What community organizations, city boards, commissions, or authorities or other community activities are you currently involved in?
I am on the City Planning Commission, which I am very grateful for that opportunity to serve. While I was working at Bloombox, I decided I didn't want to work in customer service forever, so I wanted to get into urban planning. I began studying urban planning after my first degree and I'm actually finishing those requirements this December. For some financial reasons, I may opt to wait to get that degree conferred, but for all intents and purposes, I'll be finishing my degree the end of this month or next month, rather. And as well as that, I am the Secretary for Neighbors United. I got involved with that right after the, well, after 2020, rather, the pandemic was still going on. And I'm glad to be a part of that organization because the pandemic really took a lot of wind out of the sails as we saw for a lot of organizations, community-based, because it was hard to meet. It was hard to meet and gather and get together. So with the help of my cousin Ralph over there, he motivate motivated me to continue participating and we're happy to say that I think that the neighborhood group's really coming back and I look forward to continuing to participate in that way. And those are the two main, or actually, those are the two official capacities I have for that question.
Thank you. Vice President Craig.
Thank you, Council President. If appointed to city council, do you plan on seeking an election for the seat, the open seat in 2023?
I absolutely do. And also, I would like to note that as someone who does not affiliate with a major political organization, it's difficult to actually win elections. That not that's a statistical fact. It's a resource problem as well. However, incumbency does give an advantage, so I would see it as an honor and I would be very grateful for that opportunity because it gives me a leg to stand on to continue representing the people of Lancaster. Obviously, representing the people of Lancaster is something I've been very interested in for a long time, although I do recognize, looking back, that maybe running for mayor wasn't the best way to start that out. I wanted to make a statement at that time, but as I've grown and developed, I've come to understand that, you know, I still have learning to do. However, it doesn't change the fact that I admire Marisa Rachi for what she's done. In fact, creating the Department of Neighborhood Engagement is something I admire because I think that it's something we needed desperately.
Thank you.
Counselor Kalix.
Thank you, Council President. If appointed to city council, what committee would most interest you to serve on and why?
So I think for my current profession and personal interests, Public Works is the logical choice. I am learning more about how Public Works works. It's vague thing, what is Public Works? It's a lot of things that I probably shouldn't use the time here to describe, but it goes to stormwater, transportation, walkability of a city. It does involve public safety as well. I think that that is the most logical section of the council to be the committee chair for.
Counsel Diaz.
As a member of city council, how would you encourage public participation among city residents?
Well, I think you know where I sit on this one a little bit. I do like to give myself a little bit of credit for the fact that we have cameras in council chambers now. And looking back, I think that really equipped the city to handle the pandemic because we already had infrastructure and a public understanding in place for how to engage in that way. I do think that there are more steps we can take to build out digital infrastructure to make our government more accessible. However, I I have to agree that you have to meet people door-to-door. Like, I think Engage Lancaster, for example, is a wonderful tool, although to utilize it best, I think that people need to go out door-to-door and say, hey, I'm here, we have this survey, we're trying to get information, would you like to take this? We need to combine the real world or the physical world, rather, with the digital world because these are all part of the same urban fabric. I think that as we come to understand what building human society is, we're going through very rapid shifts. And this is a critical point where, I mean, we're talking about things like the metaverse. Like, I don't know that I want to get on the meta platform for that. However, we need to begin a better integration of digital and physical infrastructure to engage the public in the best way possible because it is difficult to get to meetings, like for a variety of reasons.
Counsel O'Royall.
Mr. Dastra, what experience do you have successfully working with people of varied backgrounds and perspectives?
I think Planning Commission is a good example of that. I have very interesting viewpoints on several subjects and zoning amendments that you guys approved earlier in the year are a good example of how I had an impact there. Not everything I suggested got into the legislation that was eventually approved, but, for example, the parking, it's all special exceptions. You can't buy right allow parking garage or surface deck parking lot in all regions of the city. And that was something I put forward to the rest of the commission before that change was made. I forget exactly. I forget exactly, but there were some by-right exceptions. The reason I did that is because we are, despite having a parking issue and a parking crisis, I know I defer on, or have very different views on parking than I think is common. But I do think that we need to find more amicable solutions for solving the parking crisis while getting us on the trajectory to having the ability to adaptively reuse structures and let our transportation infrastructure be more publicly available than isolated inner vehicles. So Planning Commission is by far the best example of how I've worked with other people with varying viewpoints. But also in my current job, you know, I'm working with people I've never met before now. Public Works Crew, I love those dudes. I know we have very different opinions, but we all respect each other. And I'm very glad to be a part of Lancaster Township because it's giving me a whole perspective I never really had before and viewpoints I've never really experienced.
And Counselor Walsh.
What unique experiences or strengths do you possess that you hope can benefit City Council in serving the city?
Well, I'm very unique. All right. That is probably the biggest question for me when I was thinking about it. In fact, it's why I brought the stack of papers because one of the points I want to make is that I actively go through Pennsylvania state legislation to try and get an understanding of what the tools in our toolbox are. Some of the things I've advocated for in the past are public bathrooms, for example. We have a corporate power in Chapter 124 that permits us to create public bathhouses. I'm a very active proponent of public transportation. There are powers that allow us to allocate funds there. And in fact, I want to take this opportunity during my application to advocate for an allocation of ARPA funds to public transportation. Because when you look at the cost of not just housing, but transportation costs as a percentage base, sometimes those are comparable to someone's housing costs. And so to create more affordable housing, I do believe we need to create more affordable modes of transportation, more accessible modes of transportation. And this also makes me bring up vehicle code. Not only is Act 67, the third-class city code relevant to us, but Title 67. Chapter 205 grants municipalities the ability to apply for regulation over their own streets, to put it in layman's terms. We have to go to PennDOT for a lot of things, but I think we've identified in the city a lot of places where we need to make improvements. Now, it's not like we can do anything and everything. There are still regulations. But I think us being a city with so many state highways cutting us up, we need to have more control, and having these ARPA funds at hand right now is a good opportunity for us to consider that option. That option also permits us to combine that right with other municipalities. So maybe there are neighboring municipalities that see similar issues in their community, and they don't want to go to PennDOT and deal with that paperwork through them. We can maybe streamline the process by doing more cooperation in that sense. I already mentioned my participation in this chamber before. I think that has been a very unique experience for me, growing. I've been in very difficult positions in my life, and the opportunity to be up at this stand as a public, as a member of the public, and frankly, sometimes just vent, really helped save me from making poor choices in the past. And so I recognize the power of this chamber and how just giving people the opportunity to let loose can sometimes be a beneficial thing, even if it's not a savory opinion. But then, I guess finally, us being a city with limited powers, we're a third-class city. Sometimes we've got to fight for what we want. And it's a little difficult for me to address this topic, so I am going to be somewhat vague. But I realize that, a certain experience in high school, there was a teacher who frankly abused their power. And at the time, I felt really powerless. I felt like I can't, I would sound crazy if I was bringing this up. I'm just being dramatic. But eventually, no, I realized those things were validated when another person came forward, and I'm glad they did. I don't let the powerful stomp on me, nor will I allow that to happen to my city. I'm here to fight for the people of Lancaster. Every day, I do my best. I'm not a perfect person. I make mistakes. I'm highly emotional. I'm getting emotional right now, even. But I think that my resilience is an asset to this commission, and I think there are ideas that I can bring to the table that we can all work through as a body of seven that you can help me refine, and I can help. Maybe we can introduce them to the public in a way that we're providing something new, different, and like I had said earlier, be an exemplar of a community that other people want to follow. I believe that we can make Lancaster the next great American city.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dastra.
Thank you.
Okay. Our next interviewee is, sorry, it's scrolling, Andre Gilbert. Good evening, Mr. Gilbert.
Good evening, Council.
Feel free to move that microphone wherever you need it, up or down.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you. I'll begin with the requirement question. Are you at least eighteen years of age?
Yes, I am.
Have you continuously resided within the city of Lancaster for at least one year prior to the date of the appointment?
Yes, I have.
Are you currently a federal, state, or county office holder or employee of the city of Lancaster?
No, I am not.
Thank you very much. Mr. Gilbert, you can begin with your time to introduce yourself to council.
Okay. I'm Andre Gilbert. I am an African-American businessman. I have the Gilbert Services Group. I have a, within that group, I have a janitorial service, commercial residential. I have another branch that's entertainment wing where I am a professional DJ, and I DJ weddings and parties and events. I do a lot of events around the city where a lot of times I'll DJ for free, you know, because the community, they need it. Yeah, they need it. They need an outlet and everything like that. So I just try to be there when I can to support that. I'm just looking at my notes here. Let's see. So I am also a U.S. Navy veteran. I served for seven years. Let's see. I went to, we call it Great Mistakes, but it's Great Lakes, Illinois, for Navy boot camp. And then I went to weather school at Chaney Air Force Base, and that's in Illinois as well. And then I was thrust at nineteen into Operation Desert Shield. And while I was still there, it turned into Operation Desert Storm. Very interesting experience, enlightening. There's a lot of things that I've seen that I wish I had not seen. But my main goal was to, you know, do what I need to do, support the country, and represent the country, and come back home alive. Also, let's see. I am part of the African-American Cultural Alliance. So I wanted to thank y'all for y'all's help with that. We just did the festival back in Reservoir Park back in September. We were able to come to an accord and get that done for the community, especially that Friday and Saturday. It was just so many people there. I was just like, wow, look at all the people. Usually, we get a big turnout on Friday and Saturday, but it seemed like this year, coming post the pandemic and everything like that, they just wanted to be, as they say, or like Beyonce says, they wanted to be outside. So also, let's see. I'm part of the N W A C P. I am also the Director of Veterans Affairs. And I actually have my own nonprofit, which is the Gilbert Leadership Initiative, where we focus on at-risk youth, single mothers, and of course, veterans. And I'm part of the Lancaster City Democratic Committee.
Thirty seconds, Mr. Gilbert.
Okay. And I'm the Southeast Corriggerate Leader, newly appointed there. Tom O'Brien, the county chair, has asked my, well, I was going to do it on my own, but he recommended that I get with Josh Hunter, the Director of Christmas Addicts, to reform the Black Caucus, and I'm the co-chair of the Veterans Caucus as well.
I'll allow you to continue because that is directly related to my first question. What community organizations, city boards, commissions, or authorities, or community activities are you currently involved in?
Okay. So I'm on, I'm with the N W A C P. I'm on the African-American Cultural Alliance. I'm part of Lancaster City Democratic Committee. I have my own nonprofit. Matter of fact, we're doing, next month will be the Third Annual Christmas Toy Giveaway, geared towards single mothers. So let's see. The first year, which was 2020, we were able to give toys to forty single mothers. Last year, sixty single mothers. So now the goal this year is a hundred single mothers to, so they can have, you know, toys for their kids for Christmas. I actually also have a podcast as well, where I just interview anybody interesting. Matter of fact, my last interview was with Dr. Hollister, which was very interesting and enlightening as well. We met at the Christmas Addict Community Center, Dr. King Breakfast, January 2020, yeah, before the lockdown. We were actually sitting next to each other at Millersville. And I was able to talk to him and kind of allowed him to be even more woke than he is now, as we like to say.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
Vice President Craig.
Thank you, Council President. Mr. Gilbert, if appointed to City Council, do you plan on seeking election for one of the seats open in 2023?
Oh, yes, ma'am. Definitely. I plan on doing this year and learning, running for the reelection for the next two years, to at least to finish out the term. And I would like to run for reelection for the next four years after that and figure it out after that because the people came to me, and they're like, they came to me when Counselor Xavier stepped down. And I was like, oh, I don't know, you know? But a lot has happened between then and now, and I'm already in the community doing things and canvassing, talking to people, giving, explaining to people, they don't know how government works a lot of times, and explaining to them like versus what's the Harrisburg seat or, you know, the Thaddeus Stevens seat, as I call it, a smoker's seat. We won't go into that. But, you know, just breaking it down what government is, how they should be part of government, how they should vote. Like, I'm like, you have to vote in order to be heard. Like, people died for this. Every time I go to the polls, I remember I tell them, I said, I'm just, they're like, you okay? I'm like, I'm just trying to understand that. There were people that had to walk miles to vote. They sick dogs on them. They were two-thirds of a vote or whatever also. Water hoses and everything, so your vote is very valuable. I mean, it was very, it was really interesting to me to see that, I'm not talking too political, but I mean, the vote counts. I mean, look what happened this past election. I mean, I was like, wow, this is, you know, and then the recount that they had to do in Georgia. So it was very interesting. So yes, I plan on being here, being a voice of the people, and helping wherever I can help out.
Thank you.
Counselor Kleest.
Thank you, Council President. If appointed to City Council, what committee would most interest you to serve on and why?
Okay. I actually went on the website and kind of researched it. I was like, Public Works sounds interesting because I've had some interesting conversations with Mr. Campbell. Community planning is very interesting since I'm already in the community doing things of that nature. I'm big on economic development as well because I believe education and economic empowerment is imperative for the people. They have to understand that. They need to realize that. And what's really interesting is I saw the CRIS. The CRIS is interesting. I would like to really be helpful in getting the money to, I guess, the people that really like need it so they can like really develop their businesses and get to the next level and, you know, provide more jobs. And just, I mean, people just need to feel better right now. You know, they need to feel that they can come to government, vote, pay their taxes, just everything. You know, just be part of the system because a lot of people feel, they're maligned and disillusioned about a lot of different things. And I'm like, just surprised how a lot of people were telling me that they don't vote. So I did register a lot of them to vote as well. Thank you.
Counselor Diaz.
As a member of City Council, how would you encourage public participation among the city residents?
That's a good question. Wow. Okay. So I'm already kind of doing that as well. I just basically openly challenge them to just engage and be part of the community. Be part of the events. Come out, you know, definitely vote, and just come out, like, do some of the research on your own and educate yourself what's going on so you can make the proper decisions and the proper votes that need to be, you know, made at this time. And because we're in a different time now, it's just, they always keep saying vote like, you know, it was your last. So it's real important, especially since you know who that's just said he was coming, trying to come back and be in the White House. But, you see? Yeah, that's about it.
Real quick, I just wanted to thank you for your service.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
It was interesting, real quick. So when I first got out of the military, I wouldn't even talk about it unless it was in an interview for a job. So to be the way it is now and actually go on Veterans Day and, you know, partake in some of the free food and things like that, and my, it's like, like, that's all right. Now, I still don't openly say, okay, I'm a veteran, I'm a veteran, but I, you know, it's a little better than what it used to be. Yeah. So thank you for that.
Great. Counselor Royal.
What experience do you have successfully working with people of varied backgrounds and perspectives?
I'm constantly working with other people of other backgrounds, perspectives. So like, what we, especially what we're doing at African-American Cultural Alliance, it's to celebrate and to acknowledge the African-American community. But also, that's not our main focus. Our main focus, our focus is also to, you know, get other people of other ethnicities together to mobilize and to, you know, to entertain them and to help them economically. That's why we do the Black Business Expos, and we do the block parties. We're doing the Light Up Southeast, actually, beginning of next month. Just to kind of have them see like, we could all work together. We're all the same, you know? That's basically what it's all about. It's about giving the people, well, sometimes a handout, but more so a handup. Yeah. So definitely.
Thank you. And Counsel Walsh.
Thank you, Council President. Mr. Gilbert, what unique experiences or strengths do you possess that you hope can benefit City Council in serving the city?
Oh, I love this question. Okay. So I believe I can almost talk to anybody about anything. And if there's something I do not know, I will find out and do the research or whatever, and ask somebody else or whatever like that. But I believe I can go places that you can't go. Because I've been in places here in town and all over this world. I can relate to the young people because I have to listen to the music and stuff like that. And I educate them about the music that is just entertainment, and there's more to life than just knowing that those are Jordan Tens and that you need to pull your pants up and that there's manners and so forth and so on. Matter of fact, I'm, have a meeting coming up with the Interim School District of Lancaster Superintendent about going into the schools and teaching the young men manners, about government, about life, and so forth and so on, to show them that there is a better way. I talk to people from different backgrounds all the time. Like, especially, and even at my job, or just walking through the town, I was actually surprised. People from the Caucasian community that were coming to Christmas Addicts to vote, I was like, wow, I didn't even know some of y'all even lived in this area. But it's been very interesting. And then, you know, we have a high percentage of the Latino community, so that's very- So that's very interesting as well. I do speak some Spanish and all that like that. So they're always, if they don't really know me, they're really impressed with that. And you're looking at me like, well, I'm like, no, I'm just a black guy from Philly, just paying attention, just trying to learn, just trying to help. So that's about it.
Mr. Gilbert, thank you so much.
All right. Thank you for your time.
Thanks. All right. Okay. Our next interviewee is Jeremy Hayes. Mr. Hayes, good evening.
Good, good evening. That works.
That works. Uh, we'll begin with the requirement questions. Are you at least eighteen years of age?
Yes.
Have you continuously resided within the city of Lancaster for at least one year prior to the date of the appointment?
Yes.
Are you currently a federal, state, or county office holder or employee of the city of Lancaster?
No.
Thank you. All right, let me reset time here. All right. And please introduce yourself to council.
Uh, hi, my name is Jeremy Hayes. I am currently the director of the Housing Rights and Resources at Tenfold. Um, put it simply, that's the Fair Housing Department. Um, I graduated Millersville University with my bachelor's in government and political affairs and then, uh, masters in emergency management. Um, I currently work with a lot of, um, individuals from, from different backgrounds, uh, different, different needs in, in, in housing. Um, what else? No. Um, I began my work in housing, um, about eight years ago, um, at Church World Service. And I've called Lancaster my home for about ten years. Um, I've worked at, you know, Church World Service, Base Inc., L-HOP, Tabor, and now, now Tenfold. Um, and, and through my work, I've seen firsthand, uh, the importance and, and fragility of, of housing, um, for many of the city's residents. Uh, I've made connections and worked in partnership with, with many of the city's landlords, service providers, and organizations. Um, and I have a unique perspective on, on the current needs of this city. Uh, and I've worked with residents again from every, every quadrant and every social economic background.
Thank you very much. What community organizations, city boards, commissions, or authorities, or other community activities are you currently involved with?
Right. Uh, so, um, I currently, um, you know, met in a while, but I currently serve in the Lancaster County Refugee and Immigrant Coalition. Um, I manage and lead, uh, the eviction prevention network. Um, I attended, uh, President Mike Stoller's annual back to school giveaway. Um, I tabled Lancaster Pride events, Lancaster Recovery Day events. Um, I was, I attended the City Lancaster Welcoming City event. Um, I was a part of that, that process as well, when during the recirculation with, with Sira. Um, I lead fair housing and tenant and landlord workshops throughout the year, um, including organizing and leading an annual fair housing summit each year. Um, and I partner with the cities and LGHs, um, led remediation teams, um, for outreach.
Thank you. Vice President Craig.
Thank you, Council President. Um, Mr. Hayes, if, if appointed to council, do you plan on seeking election for one of the seats that will be open in two thousand and twenty-three?
Um, honestly, I have not decided yet. Um, if the work, uh, that we're, we're working on throughout the year, um, requires me to, um, I would make that decision to, to run. Um, but currently, uh, I don't know. Yeah.
Thank you.
Counselor Kleest.
Thank you, Council President. If appointed to city council, what committee would most interest you to serve on and why?
Um, the committee I'd be most sort of interested in serving on would be anything to do with, with affordable, development of affordable housing. Um, that's currently a, a, a need nationwide. It's a huge need in the city at the moment. Um, we get a lot of calls, uh, from people on, on fixed incomes, lower incomes about, um, getting non-renewals for their leases and they just can't afford what's out there. And the wait lists currently are in the years. Um, so anything that involves the development of affordable housing, making housing more affordable, even if it's not, you know, that traditional affordable housing, um, anything involving codes, planning, zoning, that sort of thing.
Thank you.
Counselor Diaz.
As a city council member, bear with me.
Got it.
How would you encourage public participation along the city residents?
Um, I would continue doing what I, what I'm currently doing, um, promoting events, uh, meetings like this through, through social media, um, doing outreach events, um, tabling events in specific neighborhoods and, and quadrants. Um, we recently did a walk, uh, with the city code inspectors, um, on Beaver Street. Um, and then my department is, is tabling, um, one coming up in December, I think. I think it's December. It's soon. I have to look at my calendar to know when it is exactly. Um, but I do those kinds of things. Go out, um, and a lot of people here said going door to door, um, doing those in-person outreach events, um, working with the social service hubs that are, that are in the city. Um, Food Hub is one. Um, so those, those kind of outreach, and people are already going to these hubs and then having city officials there to, to describe and to talk about the things that they're going through, at least to listen to people. Um, advertise through, through radio outlets, um, print outlets, um, LNP, both online and, and in print. Um, and then hold events online and in person like, like we're doing, doing here, just making it more broad through, through Facebook, Zoom, Teams, um, whatever kind of outlet somebody has as well.
I didn't quite catch something. If you can repeat that, cause you're, I couldn't hear you well. You say you, you walk around the city with inspectors?
Um, they had a, a, a event, um, a few months ago, uh, the city inspector team, uh, did a Beaver Street Walk. Um, and I was part of that along with, me and my team were part of that along with, with Church World Service, um, just to walk down the street, do, I think they were, they were doing outside inspections. Anybody who came out to talk to us, we would then go talk to. Um, I had a, a bag with my, my trusty tenant landlord guides that I would hand out to people, um, and answer any questions they had about landlord tenant issues. Um, the inspectors would speak to them if they wanted to, that sort of thing.
So it's city inspectors, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Royal.
What experience do you have successfully working with people of varied backgrounds and perspectives?
Successfully. Um, so I work with, uh, Church World Service, put me in, in, in contact with, with people from drastically different backgrounds. Um, I was the, the housing location specialist for Church World Service. So my job was essentially to, to find incoming refugees housing. Um, so I had to talk with landlords who were of a different background, um, and convince them to rent to people who had, um, no job history, no credit, um, and, and no rental history and send, and rent to them. Um, so anytime I found somebody housing, I'd say that was a success. Um, I would then work with them throughout a few months. Um, if a landlord called me, or the tenant reached out to me, I'd go over and, and try to work with them. Um, even if I didn't have an interpreter with me, a lot of, a lot of hand motions, um, you know, what not to put down the drain, what, what, uh, how to, how to, one, I taught one guy how to make a coffee in his coffee maker without an interpreter. So that was fun. Um, um, so I've been working with people from different backgrounds since, since two thousand and fourteen. Um, with, with L-HOP and Tabor, I was working with people who were experiencing homelessness, um, people who are on disability, people with disabilities. Um, and, and even, even today now, I'm still getting calls about, um, individuals who are, are renting and don't have, have the resources and income to, to move, even though, uh, they're having those maintenance issues or, um, just don't have, have the, the, the know-how of how to navigate that, that relationship with their landlord. And I'm getting calls from landlords too, um, who, who do have that know-how and still need those questions answered.
And Counsel Walsh.
Thank you, Council President. What unique experiences or strengths do you possess that you hope can benefit city council in serving the city?
So I kind of, I, I think I explained that a little bit. Um, I work with, with Tenfold and Church World Service. Um, I have a unique understanding of, of the current need in housing in, in the city, um, through the work with, with the eviction prevention network, um, throughout our COVID, um, and, and currently now. Um, I'm in a unique spot to, to understand the needs of, of people. I know transportation was mentioned before, which is a huge need, um, even for people just coming into the appointments to, to speak with us, um, getting to work, getting to those affordable housing units that are maybe outside of where they work. Um, I have, I have connections and, and with, with landlords, with providers, with agencies, um, church groups all over the, the city and county. So, yeah.
Thank you so much, Mr. Hayes. I appreciate you coming this evening.
Yep.
Checking my list. Our next applicant is John Hirsch. Mr. Hirsch, thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you.
We'll start with the requirements, questions. Are you at least eighteen years of age?
Yes.
Have you continuously resided within the city of Lancaster for at least one year prior to the date of the appointment?
Yes.
Are you currently a federal, state, or county office holder or employee of the city of Lancaster?
I am not.
Okay. Bear with me while I reset my time here. All right. Mr. Hirsch, if you could introduce yourself to council, go right ahead.
Well, thank you so much for the opportunity to come and, uh, speak to you all tonight. Uh, my name is John Hirsch. Uh, I was born and raised in Lancaster County, um, just a little outside of the city and, uh, and have moved here in, uh, the recent years, um, as a chosen home because I fell in love with Lancaster City. And that is why I want to run to, uh, serve my city on city council. Um, during my teenage years, I would ride my bicycle, uh, from my parents' house, uh, downtown. And that exposure to the city really is what, uh, caused me to fall in love with, uh, the community and the cultures that reside here. Um, and, uh, have had the honor of living on, on Ross Street. Um, Lancaster is a beautiful, a wonderful city. Um, it has so much going forward. It has so much potential and promise. Um, and we also face issues at the same time, uh, particularly with accessibility to the city, uh, in regards to housing affordability, in regards to street safety, um, and in regards to engaging our citizens and having them here, uh, in council chambers and at public events and public meetings. And those three items, um, I think would be my priority. Um, I think there's a lot we can do in the housing space. Um, a little bit on my, uh, I should back up a little bit, a little bit on my professional background. Uh, I'm a certified public accountant licensed in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Um, I currently work for the Lancaster County Housing and Redevelopment Authority as a fiscal assistant. Uh, my primary responsibilities are the, uh, timely distribution of, uh, Section Eight and, uh, emergency rental assistance payments, um, along with, uh, kind of basic accounting responsibilities, bookkeeping, journal entries, um, bank reconciliations, et cetera. Um, previously I worked as an auditor, uh, a financial statement auditor for, uh, Grant Thornton in Philadelphia, um, prior to moving back to Lancaster. Um, I couldn't stay away. I, I truly love Lancaster. I love this city. And, uh, I think that pretty much summarizes why I seek to serve.
Thank you. What community organizations, city boards, commissions, or authorities, or other community activities are you currently involved with?
So currently I serve as the treasurer and spring bike fling chair for the Common Wheel, which is a nonprofit, uh, bike shop, which you may be familiar with on, uh, North Queen Street, um, and our location in Reservoir Park as well. Um, in those roles, I am responsible for, uh, steering the finance committee, uh, leading finance committee meetings, um, going over our budget and tracking our financial, uh, picture and progress. Um, as a spring bike fling chair, I'm responsible for kind of overseeing the planning of our big event, which is the spring bike fling where we, uh, donated last year two hundred bicycles to children in the school district of Lancaster, um, and are looking to donate even more this year. Um, so we're looking forward to that. Um, I also recently, uh, showed up to, uh, a planning commission meeting, uh, to discuss a project I recently underwent where I set bus chairs, um, at bus stops. Um, the point of this project was to kind of, uh, draw attention to, uh, the fact that there's kind of a lack of bus infrastructure, um, for riders of Red Rose Transit Authority. Um, and I'm really looking to advance that project in some way, somehow. Um, I'm not sure what that'll look like yet, but I'm really looking forward to hopefully advancing that conversation, um, because I think transit is really important to, uh, to the city. Um, in addition, I have, since the two thousand and twenty, uh, election in, uh, November of two thousand and twenty, I have volunteered, uh, to help count mail ballots, um, at the county. Um, I think this is an important project because I am a huge believer in democracy. Um, and I believe that it's important to oversee the mechanics of that democracy and safeguard that democracy. Um, and lastly, I really just do everything I can to show up to community events, um, including planning and traffic commissions. Uh, those are kind of areas that I've taken an interest in, but also, uh, the First Friday Forums put on by the Hourglass Foundation, um, and just any other community events of interest that I can attend. Um, I would say that those are, uh, kind of my community involvements thus far.
Thank you. Vice President Craig.
Thank you, Council President. Before I answer my question, Mr. Hirsch, I have asked at least twenty-five people who sat those chairs at those bus stops. So it's a pleasure to meet you.
Thank you.
So my question is, if appointed to city council, would, do you plan on seeking election for one of the seats that will be open in two thousand and twenty-three?
Yes, I do. Um, because I think it's important to have continuity of leadership and vision, uh, in the council. And I won't say any more than that.
Thank you.
Counselor Kleest.
Thank you, Council President. If appointed to city council, what committee would most interest you to serve on and why?
So I think, uh, finance committee is probably the one that most naturally suits, uh, suits my background and, and knowledge and skill sets. Um, particularly in the realm of the audit. I know, uh, you all just received a presentation on your annual audit this past month. Um, I think that's definitely background and knowledge that I can bring to the table. Um, I think, you know, understanding the city's financial picture is important, not because I think government should necessarily be run like a business, but because I think it's important to steward, uh, taxpayers' dollars wisely and invest in things that return value to the taxpayers. Um, and I think finance committee just tracking our financial progress and where we invest tax dollars, um, is an important thing. But, but on that note, um, I think, you know, given my background, uh, having degrees in accounting and economics as well, I think Economic Development Committee would be another committee that would probably suit my skill set and knowledge base as well, as well as community planning.
Thank you.
Counselor Diaz.
As, as a member of city council, how would you encourage public participation among the city residents?
So truthfully, um, I'm young. I have a lot to learn. Um, I'm always seeking to listen and learn from other people. Um, and I think part of that, uh, is, is developing a good public engagement, uh, strategy. And I think, uh, first and foremost, I would commit to volunteering as much as possible with our city's nonprofit organizations, understanding the work that they do here, um, and understanding the ways that they interface with our constituents, uh, with our citizens, um, and seeing how, you know, we can best, uh, promote the work that they are doing. Um, second, I think it's important to just show up, um, to go talk to residents, uh, in neighborhoods. Um, I always try to make an effort to talk to my neighbors on Ross Street, um, as well as my partner Adriana, uh, and her neighborhood in the southwest corner of the city. Um, and just really seek to go, you know, any opportunity that I have to, uh, ask residents, um, I think something that could be a really important and really useful question, which is, what is the next smallest thing that you think, uh, Lancaster City Government could do to, uh, improve your block or, or to help your, your neighborhood? Um, the reason I like this question so much is, is twofold. Um, I think it's important for us to, uh, set reasonable goals, uh, and, and seek after things, um, projects and improvements that, that, that are attainable and are not dependent on, um, you know, other authorities or bodies, um, that may exercise their control over us, especially as we are a third-class city. Um, I think a great example of this, truthfully, is the, uh, Plum Street and New Street Roundabout. I think that was a great, uh, project that, you know, we just, I mean, truthfully, at least this is what it looked like. I know, I'm sure there was a lot of deliberation, but, uh, you know, putting barrels down and putting paint down and saying, hey, let's try this and let's see how it goes. And I, I think it's been a huge success. I think it's, uh, you know, we're in the process of making that permanent now, is my understanding. Um, and I think our city can, can do a lot more projects like that where we're, you know, we don't have to invest tons of tax dollars, um, but, but really, uh, do the small things. tons of tax dollars, but really do the small things. And the second part that I like about that question is, it is returning agency and ownership to individual blocks and saying, hey, this is your block. What would you like to see? I think that's an important way to engage constituents because, at the end of the day, we can't do everything as a council. We're limited in what we can do, again, you know, by other authorities, but also in the resources that we have available to us. So I think, you know, between volunteering with nonprofits, just asking people wherever I go this question, I think that would be my, the ways in which I would engage our citizenry.
Thank you. Counselor Royal.
What experience do you have successfully working with people of varied backgrounds and perspectives?
So I'd say I've been working with people of varied perspectives and backgrounds for pretty much my whole life. I have disagreements on, on kind of the big issues with, you know, even my own family members, and there's a lot that I've learned through that process. I've also worked in jobs that, you know, kind of run the whole spectrum. Just in the last five years alone, I was counting today, I've worked in food preparation, I've worked in grocery delivery, I've worked at a stand at Central Market, I worked for our family painting company, and I've worked as an auditor, you know, obviously, and as a fiscal assistant now. And I think what I learned, especially in the, in the public accounting world, having a lot of different managers, a lot of different people with different expectations, is I've learned how to be a team player in that space, learn to listen and respect other people. Also, in the past five years, I have tutored athletes at Penn State University, my alma mater, and I learned how to explain things in more than one way. I think that's really important and a very useful, essential way, really, to educate people, is to learn how to explain things in more than one way. And I think, you know, one thing that I've learned in this process is to just assume that the person you're talking to knows something that you don't. And I think that makes me a better listener, and I think that attitude would serve me well in a position like a city councillor, just to assume that there's a lot I don't know, especially because I, because I am so young, and I'll talk more about that in this, in this final question. But I think it's important just to remember that, no matter what we're doing, we respect one another, we listen to one another, and we remember that despite our differences, we are serving a higher purpose, particularly in this chamber. We are here to serve the residents of Lancaster. If I am so fortunate as to be appointed to this seat, I have ideas about what I, what I think could improve the city, but at the end of the day, I come to this position knowing that it's not all about me, you know, it's about listening to people and appreciating their perspective and what they have to say.
Thank you. And Counsel Walsh. What unique experiences or strengths do you possess that you hope can benefit city council in serving the city?
So I'd say three things. I do think my finance background, I know I've kind of talked about it a little bit at length, but I think making decisions, again, with a stewardship of tax dollars in mind, is an important approach for this, for this council to take and to make investments in the city that we know will return to, to the citizens, and just being able to apply that understanding to everything that we do. But I think more importantly, attention to detail is another strength of mine. It's kind of why I ended up in the accounting world, to be honest, because, you know, you have a lot of numbers and very minute details that you have to track and follow. Whenever I walk a block in the city, I always notice all the little things. I mean, every little crack in the sidewalk or every piece of trash or something that might be there, or something that, you know, could be attended to or that we can improve. I think that attention to detail is important because I think it ultimately results in acknowledging the things that often get overlooked. I go back to the bus chair project specifically for this because I think oftentimes when we're in our cars, we drive past people that are at bus stops and we don't even realize that they're there. And, you know, it's, it sounds like a very minute, a very frivolous thing, but what really hit me was, and what really inspired me to continue on with the project, was seeing a woman who had to be, I would say, in her sixties or seventies, an elderly woman, laying on the sidewalk in August, waiting for a bus. I just don't think that's an acceptable state of affairs, and whatever I can do to, to improve that situation, I would like to pursue that. And I'll close by just mentioning my youth. Again, I'm young. I have a lot to learn, but I'm willing to listen and I'm ready to learn. And more than just kind of the stereotypical, young people bring the energy, I think having, as, if I were to be appointed to the seat, I would be the first Gen Z council person, council member. And, and I think that's really, you know, I think Gen Z has really made the news a lot lately because
Thirty seconds.
We're a generation that is, is seeking to make positive change in the world, and I think having representation of young people on this council will encourage young people to engage more civically. Thank you.
Thank you very much for being here this evening.
Thank you all.
Great. Take us to our next applicant, Tony Israel. Good evening, Mr. Israel. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me.
All right, we'll begin with the requirement questions.
Sure.
Are you at least eighteen years of age?
Yes.
Have you continuously resided within the city of Lancaster for at least one year prior to the date of the appointment?
Yes.
Are you currently a federal, state, or county office holder
No.
or employee of the city of Lancaster?
No.
Okay, thank you. I will give you your three minutes to introduce yourself to council.
Okay, I'm Tony Israel. I came to Lancaster around 2017. I grew up in New York City. I was born in New York City. I saw New York City kind of become the victim of gentrification repeatedly as I moved from one neighborhood to another. And I saw the city, different neighborhoods that I had been in or that my uncle lived in, or where my parents grew up, go from being diverse and interesting to becoming more and more about, you know, money and conversations, becoming more and more about what's your rent and that kind of thing. I came, when I came to Lancaster, I didn't leave New York City until around 2006, and then I started sort of going into the countryside of Massachusetts. And then the woman that I wound up marrying and who I have a son with, her family is outside of Bedford, and then she found a job in Lancaster. So I wound up in Lancaster kind of just by chance. And I was going through a hard time when I got here, so I was kind of, didn't have my eyes open. But I happened to volunteer for the Jess King campaign as a way to get out of my own head, and I started meeting people, and I started seeing that there was a very interesting, diverse thing going on here that really surprised me and that really interested me, and I've been interested ever since. You know, why, why is this town more trying to build community, trying to preserve maybe the things that I saw in New York that were so valuable to me, the cultural things and the, the stories of all the people? And that, that brings me to, I'm a photographer, and I really, I love to tell stories. And, you know, I just want to say the stories that I've heard here, the people that are, you know, trying to become the next councillor, reinforces my curiosity and admiration of Lancaster. I, you know, I, I won't be humble.
Thirty seconds.
I was gonna say, I may not be the, I may not be the most qualified person for this job. So I'll just say that, like, hearing these stories here was very impressive, you know, people coming from all over and, and stepping up for community. Oh, the, one other thing, it'll probably come out in your questions. Go ahead, sorry.
Okay, we'll soldier on.
Yeah.
What community organizations, city boards, commissions, or authorities, or other community activities are you currently involved with?
I became, after the Jess King involvement, I met through that, I met some people that were involved in a group called Citizens Climate Lobby. It's a national organization that has a chapter in Lancaster, and after a year or so, I started becoming part of the leadership of that. And it's a bipartisan organization that tries to make progress on climate change through a fee and dividend bill. And the main things about Citizens Climate Lobby are that, that it's bipartisan, and that the efforts that I've made as, as being in leadership of that has been to try and really make it bipartisan, to reach out to various communities in Lancaster and, and outside of the city too, to try and get people to engage in this issue. I have a 14-year-old son, and I think there's nothing more important than tackling climate change now very quickly. And that all of the divides that we, whether it's, you know, whatever, color divides or, you know, party divides, all mean nothing in the context of climate change. All the emperors have no clothes, including me. Anybody over 30 is running around naked. So through that organization, I have helped put on lots of panel discussions, screenings about climate change, reaching out to, to different organizations like Brightside, like, I don't know, a lot of churches, just trying to bring people in to come together over this issue, which kind of puts the lie to all our divisions. So that's my main, that's mainly what I've done.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Vice President Craig.
Thank you, Council President. If appointed to this, to city council, do you plan on seeking election for the seats that are available, one of the seats that are available in 2023?
I would have to see if I was any good at it.
Thank you.
Counselor Kleest.
You would have to see if I was any good at it too. Or the voters. Oh, no, if I ran the voters, yeah.
Thank you, Council President. If appointed to city council, what committee would most interest you to serve on and why?
One that would really interest me would be public arts, and the reason is that, well, through Citizens Climate Lobby, recently we were able to put on a thing called Earth Day October, where there were, and actually Janet Diaz, you helped by suggesting a band that was really great. And we had different bands, and then we also had a lot of solutions people, like people that are involved in, in creating solutions on the ground, whether it's sustainable agriculture in the county, or whether it's solar people, or, so there was all that stuff there too. But the fact that there was music, and the fact that there was a diversity of people with the thumping of the music in the background, people didn't mix as much, not enough people came, but I wish more people had come. But people didn't mix as much as I had hoped, but people were moving, you know? And when people are moving and when people are involved in things, they forget, people, you know, they, we, forget about who, who is us and who is them. And so I would like to be involved in that kind of thing. Another thing that, that happened, I live on North Mulberry Street, and there are all the rain gardens, and recently there was a woman there working on one of the rain gardens, and I'm really intrigued with the rain gardens. I think they're, you know, when they're gone, they're beautiful. And they were replanting some of these rain gardens, and I was talking to her and I was thinking, you know, why, why not have neighborhood people in that block tending to the rain garden? And, you know, get people out doing things, working on their neighborhoods. And I know some of that is already, is going on in Lancaster. Yeah, so Public Works and, and also housing, you know, my experience in New York City and seeing the rents going up here, I don't want to see this town that I've grown to really love go through the same kind of gutting of its culture and its diversity. You know, a lot of people think that that's just a necessity because it's, it's economics. And so I guess what I would like to see, I would like to see other things more valued. I would like to see diversity of culture valued. I would like to see art valued. I would like to see communication valued. And if I am not appointed, I want to participate in that anyway.
Thank you. And just as a heads up, we have about five minutes remaining for the remaining three questions. Counselor Diaz.
As a member of city council, how would you encourage public participation among the city residents?
I think, you know, just by trying to be a part of creating those kinds of come-out into the street and be involved with each other events, with asking residents to participate in and have ownership, even if they're renters, like me, of their neighborhoods and their blocks, you know? Getting their hands dirty in a rain garden or things like that. And also, I think that what I would do also, I mean, my own experience has been that it's been difficult to engage city departments. I had one experience where there was a big, beautiful, old dead tree in Buchanan Park, and I thought that would be a great way to, as a, a public art piece. And when I tried to make that happen, I did run into some kind of bureaucratic roadblocks. And so I guess I would try to create more communication and opportunity for people to come up with ideas and make them happen.
Counselor Royal.
What experience do you have successfully working with people of varied backgrounds and perspectives?
Well, through my job as a photographer, I have always had to work with, from one day to the next. I did work in New York City for, for early intervention and having to go to different households, people of different economic strata, dealing with their kids who had issues, and having councillors come and work with those kids and getting to be there and getting to know the families a little bit, you know, like trying to, having to talk to people that I don't know, but being sparked by the interest of the situation and then allowing myself to be curious. And really, that experience is almost more important to me than the photographs I've come away with. So all those things. And then also And then also, I, in New York City, I was a part of developing and, and doing a inner-city outreach program for the International Center of Photography, where we'd go to all sorts of different schools in, in East Harlem and other neighborhoods, and help kids tell their stories with a camera. And just being able to do that, and listen to these kids, and help them learn some, learn some skills to tell their own stories, and just listening and being there. So I, I heard with some of the things that some of the other people said also, I think that that is so important, being able to cross boundaries and listen to each other. And that's, I guess, a big part of the reason why I'm here is my curiosity about why this town has more of a will to build community and to be community than other places I've been, than, than any other place I've been.
Mr. Jones, we only have about a minute total left.
Yeah. And I want to see, I want to see that not get snuffed out by the economics of rising rents and, and all of that. I mean, I, I want to see the value of people continue to be more and more valued. Because ultimately, ultimately, that's what matters. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Our next interviewee is Philip Jones. Mr. Jones, thank you for being here this evening.
It's my pleasure.
All right, we'll start with the requirement questions. Are you at least 18 years of age?
I love that question, yeah, by, by a few decades.
Have you continuously resided within the city of Lancaster for at least one year prior to the date of the appointment?
Yes.
Are you currently a federal, state, or county office holder or employee of the city of Lancaster?
No, I'm not.
Okay, thank you. And you can go ahead and begin your time introducing yourself to council.
Cool, all right. Let me give you, first of all, my historical connection to the city. Some 50 years ago, my sister, my eldest sister, she moved to the city, and along with her husband, she raised two boys, one of which still lives here, and I've stayed in touch with him through the years. And four years ago, my eldest sister passed away, and, and at that point, and so our relationship deepened. And a year after that, I'm sitting in Tokyo, which is where I had lived for the past 26 of my 30 years overseas, and Mom isn't getting any younger, and my career was sort of winding down. So I'm there figuring out where should I move back to in the United States, okay? So to give that process some structure, I came up with a list of criteria. And number one, the community had to be diverse, okay? So, sorry, Mom, Vero Beach isn't going to cut it. Number two, I wanted a community that hosted at least one or more colleges, okay? Because college towns tend to be progressive towns. They tend to have interesting city life, community life, interesting shops, bookstores, whatever, okay? So, and also, I needed a community where I could afford to buy, buy housing. And so my nephew Dave said, hey, hey, Phil, Lancaster, which is where he lives, checks all three of those boxes, and it does, all right? So what I did is I jumped on an airplane, and I came to town in the early summer of last year. I rode around town for five or six weeks, and I discovered that Lancaster has, as we know, some very, very rough edges. But I also came to determine, the determination the city would work for me, okay? So I ended up buying a house, and then a second house. And here I am now, before you, looking to deepen my involvement with the city, which is why I put in for the position, because I want to participate in the governance of this city, okay? And furthermore, I see at least three areas of policy where I think the city is missing opportunities, and I want to bring my leadership to bear into those three areas. Do I have time?
About 30 seconds.
30 seconds. The three areas that I want to work on. Number one, it's the city's growing population of the unsheltered, okay? Secondly, affordable housing. It's a huge beast of an issue, but we have to, we have to make progress on it. And the third thing is, the city recently passed an amendment to regulate the activity of our Airbnb operators, our share housing and our short-term rentals.
15 seconds.
So those are the three areas.
Thank you. What community organizations, city boards, commissions, or authorities, or other community activities are you currently involved with?
Okay, well, in connection to the short-term rental and the, I recently put together an organization called LAOC. It stands for Lancaster Area Airbnb Operators, okay? And we came together because we wanted to share experiences, we wanted to liaise with the city in an efficient manner, and we also wanted to benchmark other communities to see what they have done. So, yeah, LAOC, I've met, well, that's another story, I'll tell that perhaps later. And in addition to that, I continue to serve a Tokyo-based NPO called Shine on Kids. Shine on Kids provides support services for children who are going, undergoing treatment for childhood diseases. I helped them, and continue to help them, in the areas of fundraising, procurement, and service delivery.
Thank you. Vice President Craig.
Thank you, Council President. Mr. Jones, if, if appointed to City Council, do you plan on seeking election for one of the open seats in 2023?
Absolutely, absolutely. And here's the reason why, there's two of them. Number one, the initiatives that I want to work on aren't going to come to fruition in a single year, all right? Secondly, we all know that the influence of a, an appointed counselor, I, I'm not going to have the connections, I'm not going to have the network, I'm not going to have the credibility with you all in a year, no. That comes with being an elected member, elected councilperson, serving out a four-year term, and maybe a second term.
Thank you.
Counsel Kluist.
Thank you, Council President. If I'm appointed to City Council, what committee would most interest you to serve on, and why?
The Community Planning Committee, and then also the Economic Development Committee. Both of them are central to the initiatives that I would like to work on.
Counsel Diaz, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, and why?
Yeah, because both, those two committees are, are connected and central to the initiatives that I would like, the three initiatives that I mentioned earlier. Thank you. Thank you.
Counsel Diaz.
As a member of City Council, how would you encourage public participation among the city residents?
Yeah, okay, Counsel Diaz. You know, from my perspective, I've been here for a year and a half. From my perspective, I think the city does a fairly decent job of engagement on the aggregate citywide level. It does a pretty good job on, on a neighborhood level as well. Now, where I think we fall short, and I'll share some experiences with you, where we fall short is when an individual citizen works up the gumption to call on one of us, works up the gumption to send in an email, well, that's our opportunity. Because if we engage at that point, we probably have a resident who's going to be engaged for his or her lifetime. But if we don't answer our email, if we don't answer our phone, we're going to lose them. We're going to lose, lose that person, okay? So my experience is, when I first got to town, I went through the website, I noticed that there is a community engagement manager. Fine, I sent her an email, didn't get an answer, and I thought, well, maybe it ended up in her spam folder. I sent another message from a different email account, no answer. A few months later, I had an issue in my neighborhood. Somebody had tossed sneakers, you know, tossed two pairs of sneakers up on an electrical wire, and there they were dangling in, in the breeze, sending out the wrong message to the, to the, you know. And so I called to see if I can get some help to take the sneakers down. And somebody, the police said, no, no, it's PPL infrastructure, but, but it's not my service address. So a friend of mine said, call councilperson so-and-so because he can get things done. Well, I sent him an email, I didn't get an answer back, and that's all right, I found out later on, it's because he had, was transitioning out of his position. Well, fine, you know what you do, you put together an email auto reply message that says, I'm transitioning out, in the meantime, thank you for your email, and this is who you can contact in the meantime. Because we only get one shot at engagement, and we've got to capitalize on that opportunity.
Counsel Royal.
What experience do you have successfully working with people of varied backgrounds and perspectives?
I have spent 35 years professionally building teams comprised of people from diverse backgrounds and diverse cultures, okay? My first team that I put together was in 1985, was in Los Angeles. I had just started a job for Northwest Airlines as a regional manager. It was a sales and service team. It was comprised of two Japanese nationals, one African-American, one Filipino-American, Aaron, Aaron was from, a Chinese-American, and two Caucasian-Americans. Fast forward from there to 1993, I took a position for Kintetsu World Express. It's a Japanese-based global logistics provider. And trust me when I tell you that in, at, at headquarters in downtown Tokyo, I was the only one there who looked like me, okay? And, yeah, I had to work with executive, we, my job there was to come, help the company to come up with a uniform set of service standards that we would later implement in our worldwide locations. I was working with warehouse persons, I was working with customer service people, I was working with the very top executive, although, within the company, to come up with those standards, and then to roll them out. That was a seven-year gig. And interestingly, during that time that I was with Kintetsu, our subsidiary in North China imploded, sort of imploded. And my boss asked me if I could go out there to sort of help straighten it out and stabilize it, and I was glad to do that. And, you know, take a look at it, you've got a, and I did, I stabilized it, restructured it, and put it, set it on a path of profitable growth. Now, think of it, you've got a, an American national working for a Japanese company in Beijing, China. You don't get to do that unless you know how to work with people of diverse backgrounds, different cultures, and do it effectively.
And Counsel Walsh.
Thank you, Counsel President. What unique experiences or strengths do you possess that you hope can benefit City Council in serving the city?
Okay, Counselor Walsh, yeah, you know, I would summarize it by saying, I would be bringing aptitude, attitude, and approach to the job. And what I mean by approach, I mean a difference in approach because of a difference in perspective. Let me give you an example, okay? I mentioned earlier that LAOC, my organization, is liaising with the city, okay? Well, to make that discourse civil and productive, I reached out to the zoning officer, set up a meeting, the zoning officer's manager came down as, as well, a director, and it was a great meeting, it was productive. But in the course of the meeting, what I wanted to really understand is the, what did the city hope to achieve by the new regulation that was passed in May of this year, the zoning amendment? And I also wanted to know a little bit about the history. Who, in particular, who were, which were the constituent groups that participated in the policy development process, okay? And the guys were really forthcoming, they said, well, number one, city leaders, yeah, that's, and then some city residents, and also city employees. I identify at least two constituent groups who were either underrepresented in the process or weren't represented at all, okay? Number one, the Airbnb operators. And the guy said, wait, wait, no, Phil, Phil, we had at least three business people involved in the, the public hearings, and some of the other stuff, that, that, they had some involvement with Airbnb, and they were participating in the process. You know, what was ringing in my ear is some involvement with Airbnb. But the other group is, it's the guests, the guests. And the guys looked at me as if to say, yeah, Phil, you're the transients, they have no permanent connection to this city. And I think we're a little bit shortsighted in saying that, or coming to that conclusion, because these people are taking jobs when they come, that's primarily what they come to Lancaster to do. Some of those positions are permanent, some of them are not, okay? And these people are looking over our city. Can I live here? Should I live here? Okay? Now, in my experience so far, at more than a year as an Airbnb operator, I have rented to Miguel, he was a forklift operator out at Dart Industries in the second shift, I have...
One minute, Mr. Jones.
Another minute. And keep in mind, these, I've had traveling nurses, I've had an engineer who went to work down at Peach Bottom Atomic for, for two-week stint, and they wanted to come back. Keep in mind, these people are in the prime of their productive lives. They're going to continue to develop their careers, they're going to, at some, start families, buy homes, and when they do, for the next two decades or so, they are going to be paying more in taxes than they consume in services. We should be rolling out...
15 seconds.
Rolling out a welcome mat to these people, rather than saying, oh, no, no, you've got to live with, together with, with the owner of the house, because we want to keep an eye on you. They're adults, they're looking over our city, and they could be a source to help us grow.
Thank you very much, Mr. Jones.
You're very welcome.
You hit the post, as they say, in radio parlance. Exactly 15, good job. All right, and that brings us to, I leave our final interviewee for this evening, Mr. Louis Waltman. All right, I'll begin with the requirement questions. Are you at least 18 years of age?
I have shoes older than that, yes.
Have you continuously resided within the city of Lancaster for at least one year prior to the date of the appointment?
Yes.
Are you currently a federal, state, or county office holder or employee of the city of Lancaster?
No.
Thank you. All right. If you would, please take up to three minutes to introduce yourself to council.
You know, you never want to be first or last, but being last has been a real benefit. I came in, into this room tonight feeling good about the city, I'm leaving feeling, or will be leaving feeling much, much better. These, we have some great candidates here, a lot of energy, experiences, knowledge, and willingness to get in, and that's what, that's my interest, is if, if I can help the city, then I want to. If I'm an impediment, or there's somebody better, then that person should be there. But let me give you kind of three basic things for me, desire, experience, and need. I don't come late to community service. Prior to transferring to Los Angeles in 1991, I served on the Board of Goodwill Industries, the Advisory Council to what was then VOTEC of Lancaster County, and helped with the Lancaster Chamber of Commerce's campaign, Capitol Campaign. When Donnelly transferred me from LA to Memphis to build and operate a high-tech printing operation there, I was part of roundtables with Mayor Willie Harrington, trying to figure out what to make of Memphis, because there was a strong racial divide there. We had recently lost our bid to be the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame home to Cleveland, and that hurt the city, they, they believed they needed that. When I returned to Lancaster in 1997, I served on the Board of Lancaster Alliance briefly, the Board of the Urban League not so briefly, and the Board of the Capitol Campaign for the Food and Hub under Lancaster County Council of Churches to move it to its present spot at 830 North Queen Street. present spot at eight thirty North Queen Street. So I'm requesting your vote because it's in my character to participate, but I want to see the city get better, and I think there's any number of candidates you have here who will hit that from a different direction. I was vice president, senior vice president for all domestic print and digital print fulfillment operations and could point to a couple of things that I was successful at. I had to do my own budget every year, I created that, I always made my numbers, I ran facilities across the country at one time, from Temecula, California, Charlotte, Chicago, up the coast to Lancaster, I had two plants in Lancaster and one in Secaucus, New Jersey. So I am comfortable with the balance sheet, I know how to make my numbers, I always made my numbers, never missed. Additionally, I was responsible for negotiating three hundred million dollars of purchasing when DEFIN, which was the part of Donnelly I worked for, split from Donnelly. So I know how to negotiate contracts, I can understand a contract, and everybody felt good leaving those discussions, including the contractors. During my time in business, I owned responsibility for a half dozen major projects, two where I built out new plants from shelves-
Fifteen seconds.
Excuse me?
Fifteen seconds.
And several where I integrated two engineering teams that were reported to me. Lastly, as you can tell from this, I had a diverse community, and we really looked at those employees' diversity as being the reason we were successful, never an impediment to it.
Thank you. We'll continue. What community organizations, city boards, commissions, or authorities, or other community activities are you currently involved with?
Previously none, I have a library card.
Fantastic. That's a good start. Vice President Craig.
Thank you, Council President. If appointed to city councils, do you plan on seeking election for one of the seats that'll be open in 2023?
Well, I came in here tonight believing that the answer to that was yes, because I know in business it takes several years to get something going, and I know in government it's going to take even longer. However, you know, in reassessing it, as I listened to my fellow candidates for this, I think there's enough talent in Lancaster that if, if there's nothing that I'm doing that's really pushing the agenda forward in the way that my skill sets and my ability brings to bear, then I think it's probably time to take a look at somebody else. I mean, there's, you know, I really feel good about the talent that's in this room tonight.
Thank you.
Counselor Collext.
Thank you, Council President. If appointed to city council, what committee would most interest you to serve on and why?
Well, obviously, I'd serve where you thought that I needed to be. However, you know, I really think that Public Works, Planning, Budget, Finance are the places where my strengths, what I've done for forty-one years at Donnelly, that's really where it comes out. I've had engineers reporting to me, I've done programming, had programmers, teams of programmers working for me, maintenance people, pressmen, so I'm kind of good with that kind of stuff. I was lucky in high school, I worked for a carpenter in high school, and I worked my way through Penn State as a plumber, and I had a Ford Maverick with a Chilton's manual, so I really learned how to take care of cars too. So you can't do that today, but you could then.
Thank you.
Counselor Diaz.
Real quick, I just had to hear you repeat this, you say you worked for Donnelly?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. As a member of city council, how would you encourage public participation among the city residents?
Well, there's really two ways to get public participation, isn't there? There's one by not meeting the goals that you set forward, setting expectations and following, sure, you're going to get a lot of participation then. That's not the kind of participation we want, I think. The way to, the way to get it is to make sure that when you're putting a plan together, that you have full involvement and communication, two ways with the community. You do that by walking around, you do it by print media, you know, there's many different ways encouraging people to come here. And then once you set that plan and you get agreement, you make sure that you stay in contact with everybody, because there's always creep. There is always some kind of mission creep as you go along, and you start with this line, and it goes up here or down here and you miss it. So you need to get people back engaged. But it starts with really good planning and understanding what you're doing, and I would say, with my experience, what I've done is always had a Plan B. So if this isn't going to work, if there's something here, how do we early, get early engaged in making something else happen? But you have to have the people. And my wife and I were retired, we walked from one corner of the city to another corner of the city weekly. So we talked to everybody as we go, you know, that's one way. That's where I'm fairly decent, because I'm, you know, I like to talk to people, I like to engage.
Counselor Royo.
What experience do you have successfully working with people of varied backgrounds and perspectives?
You know, I kind of hit on it with my forty-one years, I've, you know, I've worked with people of all backgrounds, religions, races, from Temecula, California to outside of New York, I'd lived in New York City for a while, but I ran Secaucus, New Jersey. So I've worked with that, and as I said before, is we really took diversity as being an advantage for us and not an impediment. We didn't try to work around it, we tried to figure out, how do we use a diverse group to get the bigger good, the greater good? And we had a high employment, high employee involvement environment there, a lot of process control. But the other thing, just beyond that, is, you know, I've, I'm comfortable in a lot of, a lot of places. I was the best man at a friend of mine's wedding, Jewish wedding, I eulogized a good friend and colleague at a standing-room-only service at Brightside, that's comfortable. Politically, I have a friend who just won a seat in the Pennsylvania State Congress, House of Representatives, in the hundred and first district in Leadmon. So he's Republican, we get together, we talk, we talk politics, neither of us are scared of that. I have another friend, lifelong friend, who was a policeman in the city, detective for the county, we don't talk politics, we still get together, so there's a way to balance that. However, I needed some information on him, on some ideas I had about, that I wanted to propose about policing countywide, and, you know, I was easily able to access him and get his years of experience to get those ideas that I had vetted.
And Counsel Walsh.
Thank you, Council President. What unique experiences or strengths do you possess that you hope can benefit city council in serving the city?
You know, I don't really have any unique experiences, I think I have common experiences like everybody else does. I have a strong desire. I have always been a hard worker, I worked long and hard, you know, I've told this story to others, I was a mediocre, I was a good student, a mediocre athlete, but a really hard worker. At a, my soccer coach at McCaskey, at halftime, we were losing, brought the team in and said, Lou would run through a brick wall for this team. Now, he didn't put me in the second half, but I did get a nickname out of that. And I think that that's, my work ethic is, I learn quickly, but I try to apply myself and do as much as I can, and I have, frankly, I have the time now that I'm retired, to put in whatever hours need to be, to communicate with people, to find out the problems, and try to put processes together to solve those.
Thank you very much, Mr. Waltman.
Thank you.
That concludes our interviews for this evening. I want to take a moment to thank everyone who was interviewed this evening and everyone who was here tonight for their time, and our interviews for their thoughtful answers. And members of council, thank you for submitting questions and participating in this process. Just want to, just remark briefly that we know that the law only provides us with thirty days to fill a vacancy and doesn't prescribe how we do it, and I think that we're all just trying to endeavor to make this process a little better each time we do it, and hopefully we don't have to do it again anytime soon. For everyone's information, we will hold a special meeting of council on Monday, December fifth, at five-thirty to vote on this appointment. That meeting will directly precede our city council committee meeting that was already scheduled, and the person who is appointed will be seated for that meeting. This concludes our agenda for tonight, so I will hear a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Of a motion and many seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you. Don't all yell second at once.
We plan it.
Great job, everybody.
We plan-